Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Revere School Committee meeting of June 15, 2021. It's currently 6:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bronson Rizzo?
Here.
Mr. D'Ambrosio?
Here.
Mr. Feranti?
Here.
Mrs. Gravellisi?
Here.
Mr. Sinella?
Here.
Ms. Ty?
Here.
Mayor Arigo.
Pointed information, Mr. Sinella is joining us through remote participation due to him being out of state right now. And so can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
At the United States of America, in the United States, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I am going to ask for a motion to go out of order. And order to start off with the new business of donations.
So move, Madam Chair.
Second.
Second.
Okay, first by Ms. Ty, second by Mr. Feranti. So our first donation is from the lovely Priscilla Nicholson, if you could join us. Good evening. Unfortunately, Mayor Arigo couldn't be here this evening, but I'd like to include him. So Mayor Chairman Arigo, Superintendent Dr. Kelly, Vice Chair Stacy Rizzo, and Assistant Superintendent Richard Gucci, and members of the school committee. I am here tonight to present a check in the amount of $2,500 to the Garfield Elementary School from the President of the East Boston Savings Bank, Richard Gavignano. Thank you, President Gavignano, and the East Boston Savings Bank for your very generous donation. I have been on the Garfield Elementary School Council for the past several years and have seen the amazing work that has been done by Principal Corbett Coops, Vice Principal Adrian Tringali, certain teachers and parents that make up this council, doing great things for the students of this school. This generous donation will be used for educational field trips and other fun days. Thank you all. I have to thank Priscilla Nicholson. She is a great support to the Revere School District and especially for the whole Revere community. She has given so much time and love and care to the city, from the dog park to the Santa Walk, so many things that she has started and really gave us a lot of pride in the city. So on behalf of the school committee, Priscilla, thank you very much.
Could I say one?
Yes. I also wanted to thank the East Boston Savings Bank and President Richard Gavignano because every year you reminded me, Stacy, that they donate the pizza, unlimited pizza for my Santa Walk. So I, they're very, very generous to the city of Revere, and I want to say thank you. Well, thank you, thank them also.
Thank you.
So entertain a motion to accept this very generous donation.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Carol Ty first, and Mr. Feranti with the second. Roll call?
Mrs. Bronson Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. D'Ambrosio?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Arigo.
So Priscilla, thank you so much for your time and energy and always your monetary support also. I'm sure they'll do great work with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. So while we're still in new business and donation, I'm going to ask Dr. Kelly to bring up the donation from Senator Boncorie.
Thank you very much. And so the donation is from the Pharma Corporation, and we were able to access this grant through information from Senator Boncorie's office. So we're very thankful to the Senator and his staff for making us aware of this opportunity. Our STEM Director, Dr. Costa, and our robotics teacher, Mr. Miranda, actually pursued the grant, and we were very thankful to obtain $2,000 through this fund. And that funding is going to be used to support the robotics program at Revere High School. It was targeted at students in grades nine through 12 and is a perfect fit for our robotics program. So we're very thankful for that gift as well, and I'd ask if the committee would vote to accept that as well.
Is there a motion to accept?
I'll make one.
Mr. Feranti with the first?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gravellisi. Roll call?
Mrs. Bronson Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. D'Ambrosio?
Yes.
Mr. Feranti?
Yes.
Mrs. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Arigo.
Okay, going back to... Going back to the regular order of business?
Madam Chairlady, Madam Chairlady?
Yes, Mr. Feranti. I mean, Mr. Sinella, I'm sorry.
All right, while we're on the suspension of rules or out of order, I would request respectfully that we take up the budget so that I'll be able to vote for it if it meets with the approval of the Chair of the Finance Committee and the rest of the membership.
So that is a motion, Mr. Sinella, or?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a second?
Okay.
Mr. Feranti with the second. So first and second? Anyone want to have discussion on it? I'd like to just say, I'd like to see the presentations of the students because they're waiting, and the budget takes a little bit of time, and if there's questions regarding it, it just means the students have to wait a little bit longer. So that's my only comment or concern about moving that out of the order.
Well, if I may, address the issue is that, as was mentioned earlier, I'm in out of state. I would like to definitely vote on the budget. I know that there are members who will be unable to vote. I'm not exactly sure how important my vote is, if it will make a difference. But I think that if it's done respectfully as quickly as it could be, because we've already had three or four different meetings, and I will apologize to the students who have the presentation, then if we could do it in a professional manner, I don't think it's going to take too long.
Any other discussion on it?
Stacy?
Mr. Feranti?
Yeah, I think that we should accommodate Mr. Sinella. I mean, it's a pretty quick process. I know we want to get to a superintendent's report, but I think we can get it done in a reasonable time. And I just think we should go forward with it at this time.
Okay, asking for a roll call, please?
Mrs. Bronson Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. D'Ambrosio?
Yes.
Mr. Feranti?
Yes.
Mrs. Gravellisi?
No.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes.
Ms. Ty? Mayor Arigo.
Okay, so there is a motion to move the hearing of the budget up. And I'm going to start with... No, no hearing language here. Excuse me a minute, wait, someone helps me. So for two weeks, there's been a public notice out in the media, and the notice is hereby given to accordance with the provisions of Section 38N of Chapter 71 of the Massachusetts General Laws that the Revere School Committee will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, June 15, 2021, at 6:00 PM in the Emmanuel M. Feranti School Committee Room, located at the first floor of Revere High School, 101 School Street, relative to the Revere Public Schools' proposed fiscal year 2021-2022 school operating budget. All interested persons will be given the opportunity to be heard for or against the whole or any part of the proposed budget. At this time, I will open up to any proponents. Are there any proponents? Hearing and seeing none? Are there any opponents? Hearing and seeing none? Hearing and seeing none of proponents? This is closed for public hearing. And Dr. Kelly, would you like to start us off, or Mr. Feranti?
I'll start.
Okay, Mr. Feranti.
Okay. This is, this is something totally new to the school department with the extra money between the Student Opportunity Act and the S2, S3 grants. There has to be some things done to this budget. Matt Cruz, our CFO, and his staff for all the hard work they did. I'm sure this budget was a moving target from day one, and it's probably still a partial moving target, but at least we have a budget that we can vote on. Also, Dr. Diane Kelly and her staff for the time that they put into this. And also the Mayor, Arigo, and his staff on the Schedule 19. I'm sure there was tons of work done on this thing. We've also added substantial employees to this budget because of the money. And at this time, I'm going to read the series and the amounts of money. There will be a couple instances where myself and Ms. Rizzo won't be able to vote for it because we have family members working, and it would be a conflict. So at this time, I would like to start out with Series 1,000. The administration budget is $2,680,387. So move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bronson Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. D'Ambrosio?
Yes.
Mr. Feranti?
Yes.
Mrs. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Arigo.
Yes, go ahead, Dr. Kelly.
So just briefly, for those folks who are participating from home or on the webinar, the Series 1,000 that was just read is the funding series that accounts for the Superintendent's Office and the Business Office and some of the district-wide administration of the school district. And that was a piece that Mr. Feranti just shared.
Okay, the next series, 2,000, Instructional Services. The amount voted on is $64,406,262.
So move. Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bronson Rizzo?
Not voting?
Mr. D'Ambrosio?
Yes.
Mr. Feranti?
Not voting.
Mrs. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Arigo.
And if I could just speak to that, I mean, I know that was an astronomical amount of money that Mr. Feranti just read. It is the largest portion of the school department budget. It's about, it's a little, it's about 60% of our budget overall. And that is the series, the 2,000 series, where we find all of our salaries for our professional staff, including teachers, administrators, curriculum directors, our paraprofessionals, and all other folks who have anything to do with academics or with student learning, our guidance counselors, our social workers, our OTs, our PTs. All of those folks are included in that series.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next series is 3,000, Other Student Services, $9,968,589. So move.
Second.
Roll call?
Mrs. Bronson Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. D'Ambrosio?
Yes.
Mr. Feranti?
Yes.
Mrs. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Arigo.
For the 3,000 series, probably the largest line item that we see there is our transportation budget. But this is also where we pay for other student services, including food services, activities of the students such as athletics and other components like that, clubs, and our school security program.
Our next series is 4,000, Operation of Plant/Maintenance, $9,331,456. So move.
Second.
Roll call?
Mrs. Bronson Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. D'Ambrosio?
Yes.
Mr. Feranti?
Yes.
Mrs. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Arigo.
Dr. Kelly?
Thank you.
Thank you. So the 4,000 series is our plant and maintenance series, as Mr. Feranti said. And that's where all of our custodial services, our cleaning services, and any facilities upgrades that we do would be located in that series.
Okay, thank you. The next series is 5,000, Employee Benefits and Insurance,
So move. Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bronson Rizzo?
Not voting?
Mr. D'Ambrosio?
Yes.
Mr. Feranti?
Not voting.
Mrs. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Arigo.
That, that series, the 5,000 series, is as described for employee benefits and insurance. And the funding there does pay for medical insurance for our current active employees as well as that for retired employees. Those are the primary pieces. There are a couple of other line items here, including school crossing guards that fall under the same series according to the Department of Education requirements for school funding.
Okay, thank you. Series 6,000, Civic and Community Service, $39,784. So move.
Second.
Roll call?
Mrs. Bronson Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. D'Ambrosio?
Yes.
Mr. Feranti?
Yes.
Mrs. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Arigo.
Dr. Kelly?
Thank you. So the 6,000 series is a very small series. There's actually two positions that fall under that series, and they are positions that we share with the City of Revere to secure our stadium and make sure that it's kept in good working order for our students.
Okay, thank you. Series 7,000, Building Improvements, $843,119. So move.
Second.
Roll call?
Mrs. Bronson Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. D'Ambrosio?
Yes.
Mr. Feranti?
Yes.
Mrs. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Arigo.
Dr. Kelly?
Thank you. So the Building Improvement series is exactly what it sounds like, and that's a funding line item that we use for our upgrades to our school facilities.
Okay, thank you. Series 9,000, Programs with Other Schools, $14,238,649. So move.
Second.
Roll call?
Mrs. Bronson Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. D'Ambrosio?
Yes.
Mr. Feranti?
Yes.
Mrs. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Arigo.
Dr. Kelly?
Thank you. So the 9,000 series, Programs with Other Schools, is the line, is the series where we fund our tuition for outplayed students and any other students who, because of their educational needs, are placed at other schools other than our Revere Public Schools. It's the second largest series in the budget.
Okay, thank you. All right, for the total, the school department budget, the total amount is $102,691,177. So move.
Second.
Roll call?
Mrs. Bronson Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. D'Ambrosio?
Yes.
Mr. Feranti?
Yes.
Mrs. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Arigo.
Just one last thing. That's the total amount that the school department will be financing this year. And I'd also, in my era, I'd like to thank my committee members, Carol Ty, Fred Sinella, plus members of the school committee, Stacy Rizzo, Susan Gravellisi, and Anthony D'Ambrosio, with order. We could have never got this thing done, and I just want to thank everybody for all their hard work.
And just a great thank you to Matt Cruz and his expertise along with the subcommittee, our administration, and the S money that's come in. It's been really helpful, and we'll never see something like this again. And to Matt Cruz, congratulations on your senior son graduating. So even though it's a stressful time, at least it was a happy time for you also. So congratulations to you and your family.
Madam Chairlady?
Yes, Mr. Sinella?
I'd like to take this opportunity to apologize to the following speakers for any delay. And I'd like to thank my fellow members for allowing me to cast the deciding vote on the Series 2 and the Series 5 budget. And I think that we can go forward now and serve the community and serve our children very well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sinella. So true. So thank you for your help. Thank you, Matt. So we are moving on to public speak. Do we have anyone in YouTube or on the Zoom that would like to speak to us on an item?
And the folks on the Zoom, if you wanted to speak, you would just raise your hand using the raise hand icon.
Okay, seeing and hearing none, I'm closing that portion of the agenda. We have no recognition, recognitions this evening, except we did have graduation this past week. It was very well organized. Our students, I hope, are happy and successful in their lives. And don't forget where they come from and make sure they come back and come back to teach. That would be nice. So moving on to the superintendent's report of our agenda, Dr. Kelly?
Thank you, Mrs. Rizzo. The first presentation that we have tonight is from the Lincoln School. And I have had Mrs. Sarah Humus-Tracy join us. Sarah, I've made you a co-host so that you could bring on the folks who are going to be presenting with you. If you want to, if you navigate to the right where it says more next to their name, you can promote them to panelists, and they can come up and join us in the Zoom. And you are on mute, so I cannot hear what you're saying.
Do you think I would, out this downward? All right.
There you go.
Where it says more, okay. So should I promote everybody you're in now?
Everybody who's presenting with you, yes.
Okay.
If they're, if they're going to speak and present, they should be brought up.
I think I got everyone. All right.
Okay.
I'm looking, calling. Right.
So if you wanted to give a brief intro and introduce your friends who are here with us tonight, and then I can share my screen and show everybody the presentation. Does that work?
That works wonderfully. Thank you.
Great.
So I will be brief because I want to get to our actual work. Good evening, and thank you for having us. We're really excited to have the opportunity to share our experience with deeper learning and the positive impact it's had on our students and our curriculum. The team is going to walk you through the details and the logistics of our deeper learning initiatives. But I wanted to start with a really sincere thank you to the Kaleoscope team and to the teachers at the Lincoln who took on this very, very daunting initiative during very challenging times. They remain so committed and focused to our deeper learning commitment that we've had over the last several years. It was, it was so impressive, and I'm just so proud of them. I'm so excited for the teachers and the students and for our event and for us to come. So with that, I will introduce the team, and I will let them guide you through our journey. We have Lindsay Cordis, grade five teacher. We have Alexandra Ambrosino, grade three. Colleen O'Keefe, kindergarten. And we have Daniel Bonella, student. And we have Mo Coyle, assistant principal. With that, I will turn it over to Ms. Cordis. So we're going to give a, well, a brief presentation of our deeper learning initiative, and then the full team is on the next slide. The people I introduced, and then we also have Kelly Miller, ELL student, teacher. Sandra Chesna, math coach, Sarah Hartner, reading coach. Rachel Stanley, who couldn't be here tonight for second grade. So it's a pretty big team, and they've been able to lead every grade level throughout work.
And you all can feel, feel free to just prompt me when you need me to change the slide.
Next slide. So prior to the 2021 school year, we have been doing a lot of deeper learning work. We started doing this deeper learning work in 2016 when we were cohort one school of MCIEA. So through that, we have created a really large local task bank of 28 MCIA tasks that we've implemented and done all the way K through V. We have participated in the Maple School walkthroughs with other communities and schools in order to get best practices for our deeper learning. We have, alongside the district, moved our grading practices to standard-based grading and done a curriculum review of bias and stereotypes. And the thing we're probably most proud of is we've created a really collaborative culture inside the Lincoln with designated deeper learning PLG time where we work together and kind of create these deeper learning tasks. Next slide, please. So everything we do at the Lincoln is through the lens of equity and authenticity, which leads itself really well to the deeper learning work that we had taken on. And when we started doing this work... And when we started doing this work, we got a little confused on where MCIA fell and where Kaleidoscope fell. So we looked at this, and we really created this continuum of what students would be doing from the moment you start a unit to the moment you end a unit and how the deeper learning would really play into it. So when we create our units, we're really looking for students to explore in the beginning. That might be something like looking at a picture of a puddle and asking them what would happen to the puddle the next day. They don't necessarily know the vocabulary of evaporate yet, but they can kind of use their past experiences to learn on their own. And then we introduce the words like freeze and evaporate so that students can go around and find examples of those in their neighborhood. The next steps might be to learn about the water cycle and look at the weather for the last month and label examples of condensation, precipitation, and evaporation. And at the very end, to show all of their learning, the students might create a journal from the perspective of a raindrop going through the entire water cycle. So when we create these units that have students working hands-on the whole time, we're hoping that they're going to become lifelong learners and that they'll remember what they went through. Next slide. And this is kind of another visual of where Kaleidoscope and MCIA are interceding. So on the left here, you have the Kaleidoscope, which is focusing on learning and teaching. So the top picture is students working with gravity to do an egg drop experiment. So they are looking to find that gravity pulls things towards the centers of the earth, and they're doing so by dropping things off in the courtyard to see if they, which direction they go. Kaleidoscope also has a lot of inquiry-based, so students are doing research and presentations and solving authentic problems. Where MCIA, we're again looking at the project-based assessment and applying the deeper learning that they did through the Kaleidoscope work. And in that middle of that diagram, we see that there is equitable access, authentic work, and it's student-centered. And that's what we're really hoping to do is just put the student learning as the main focus. That catches you up to where we are now. So in the 2021 school year, we really implemented those school-wide PLGs where we were looking at equity and task adjustments. We did monthly equity pauses, looking at the student work. We did school-wide research of school quality measures through MCIA, where we dove into the data that we had and found the areas where we needed to grow in equity and how we could do that through our tests, our tasks, excuse me. And then the lead team who was on that slide too has attended five Kaleidoscope trainings.
Thanks, Luthen. I'm going to take over from here. So the purple box shows us what we focused on with staff this year. Our primary focus was to get people familiar with our protocols and the protocols of Kaleidoscope. We wanted to introduce the equity pause into a monthly practice within our grade levels. So what an equity pause is, is it asks the staff to look at a resource or a task or material and go through this formal process of deciding whose story is being told or who's on the story. And as a staff, we were looking at these resources to make sure our students were seeing, our students had ears so that they could see themselves and also so that they had windows so that they can see others throughout the field. Our intentions were to begin shifting the mindset of staff and acknowledging we still have steps to do to continue our work on equity. Next slide, please. So this slide was, these are some takeaways after our first Lincoln School Equity Pause in November. We did this as an entire school, and these were just some of the takeaways staff had. As you can see, they really reflected on the importance of thinking of individual students and when they could create and eventually revise their lessons for these individual students. And then this last slide was an equity pause on a smaller scale. So grades two and three did a vertical PLG a little later in the school year. And we did an equity pause on a task that third grade usually does in January. And that task is to read the two articles. One is about Martin Luther King Jr. and one's about Nelson Mandela. And we asked them to answer the question, what's the main struggle and how did they overcome it differently? Our focus question for this is the same that we've been talking about, whose story's being told, who's the voice telling the story, what assumptions are we making in this task to kind of bring you in on what the takeaways of our grades two and three teachers saw were things like teaching about social, when we're teaching about the civil rights movement and things that happened years ago, how can we continue to teach about social injustice because it's still happening? So we were looking at these articles, and we were seeing that a lot of these articles were being told as telling students that all of this was in the past. And we looked at this and said, how can we teach this in the civil rights movement but also teach that social injustices are still happening today? We also looked at the authors of these resources, and we want to, our takeaways was, one of our takeaways were that we want to look at this task a little earlier next year and decide to try to find the authors that are representing our student body a little more. We noticed that the authors of these articles didn't really represent who our students are.
So I'm going to take over from this part. Now, to try to gauge the effectiveness of our Kaleidoscope work and our work with deeper learning, we did do a staff survey. We did one that was more towards the beginning of the school year and then one just at the end of May, start of June. On this survey, we had 31 staff that responded, and the overall goal of this survey was to gauge the impact of our Kaleidoscope work on teacher awareness, equitable practices in the classroom, and then also student representation in our daily lessons and assessments. Overall, the data was very positive. We're going to go through a few questions on the next slide. When you're looking at this data, the lower the number would be disagreeing. And if you were looking over at a five, so it goes from one to five, the five would represent totally agreeing. And Dr. Kelly, if you wouldn't mind just scrolling down a little bit more so we can have that whole print in there. Thank you, I appreciate it. So I'm more aware of how my personal identity influences the lessons I create. We got a 3.9. And if you're looking at the trend of the data, you can see that we are tipping in the right direction and over to the right with higher values. The second one that's on the right-hand side is my lessons are guided by my knowledge of students' identity. This one actually was overwhelmingly positive with 4.2 average response. Onto the next slide. We have my lessons create windows, and you just actually heard Ms. Ambrosino talk a little bit about, you know, windows, where opportunities through lessons to see others' lives. This was scored at a 3.8. And then again, now about lessons creating mirrors, which are the opportunities to see their own lives for all students. Average answer of 3.7. So that one was a little bit more spread out, but it's definitely showing that it's something that we're thinking about in moving forward with next year as we continue to do equity work. That would be an area that we would continue to focus on. We can go to the next slide. So I consider whose story or experience is being told and if it could be told from another perspective. Throughout this time in Kaleidoscope, we have really started to look more critically at the resources that we're using and, you know, just what is the perspective that's being told in those resources? And what is the background of the authors? And, you know, trying to be really selective and making sure that we're choosing curriculum materials and resources and readings and articles that better represent a broader perspective and aren't biased in any way, or at least minimally biased, as much as we can try to avoid that type of thing. So again, on that one, the average answer was a 3.9. And then the last question I'll share with you today is, I consider the explicit, sorry, implicit explicit bias that is being told or reinforced and disrupted as a result of my lesson with an average score of 3.8. We weren't sure what to expect when we sent this out, given the type of year that we've had and just how challenging and the lot of transitions and the work that we've had to put in in so many different areas. But I can definitely say that when we looked at this as Kaleidoscope team, we were so proud of our staff and the work that we've done and definitely see that we're moving in the right direction.
All right. So this slide here is an example of a task done at the kindergarten level. This task is called Me on the Map, and the students label their planet, their continent, their state, and so on, and so they can picture their role within their own community and as a student in Revere. The next slide goes on to the deeper learning task that went with this. So students had to pick one place in their community that held some type of meaning to them, and then they got the opportunity to share that with their classmates. This really helps them with the idea that they have a role within the community. And students, some examples that they wrote, I like to go to the park where I get to visit with my neighborhood friends. I like to go to Target where every year I get to get a special birthday gift. So at the kindergarten level, they're identifying places within Revere that are special to them and then being able to share that with each other. And the final slide is just where we are heading as a school next year with this deeper learning work. So we are going to explore this text, Teaching for Deeper Learning, school-wide during PLG time. When we talked to staff members, we figured that it was best to give them something concrete so that we can kind of dive into this work together and all be on the same page. So a couple of our members on the lead team have already previewed this book and read it in its entirety, so we're looking forward to pushing it out to the staff. And we are going to work on creating new tasks with a deeper learning focus across all grade levels. We, when we surveyed the staff this year, we had grade levels pick a task that they are going to work on so that we all are headed in the right direction as we start next year. And we're going to utilize that equity pause to help shift our mindset around deeper learning as a whole. And that wraps it up.
Thank you all very much. Wonderful presentation. Are there any comments or questions from the committee members? Ms. Ty?
Hi. I love the particular slide of this is where I am in the world. I think that is such a difficult concept for a child to get and to master. And to have them put, be able to put that on paper, I think that's just, it's just lovely. And I think I'll use it with my grandnieces and nephews.
Absolutely. Thank you. You're a great talent.
Any other members? Well, I just want to say, Ms. Gravellisi. Thank you, Ms. Rizzo. You had mentioned you've already created some new tasks for next year. Any indication, can you share some of those with us so we'll know what to look for in the coming year?
Every grade, oop, sorry, go ahead. What's going on? I didn't want to talk over you. Every grade level's chosen different tasks. I would have to pull up the giant spreadsheet and check it out. But it's, it's definitely, we started this year with looking at our MCI tests and how they relate, and then next year will be more of a complete sort of new task and new piece. So stay tuned, because I'm sure we'll be sharing next year. But I don't have it off the top of my head unless any grade level wants to know. I know they're not finalized, but if anyone has any burning ones that they think their team's going to do? The fifth grade team used the anchor text of Hatchet, and the teacher kind of put out like a pair of jeans and whatever Ryan has when the plane crashes on him. And she asked the students how they might survive with those items. So that was one task that we're going to revisit for next year. And I think it's like a quarter of dime, a pair of jeans, and it's just things that you would have on your person. And it was to launch the anchor text of saying, how would you survive? And then the students are going to go into doing a research project, looking at different resources, so maybe a YouTube survivalist video, a text, and they're going to create their own survival plan to go along with the Hatchet text.
So Daniel, here's a question for you because you have sat there so quietly. What did you think about this project? And what did you like the most? And maybe let us know what you liked the least.
Daniel is a Beauchamp student. I was just saying hi to him because I was excited to see him.
Okay, he's going to be part of our next presentation, I think. Yes. Well, we wanted to say thank you so much for presenting. We're really looking forward to getting back to some normalcy, to get to the Lincoln School and see the wonderful work that these students and educators do all year long. So our fingers are crossed for September. And again, can't wait to see everything in person and get to see the students and speak to them. So thank you, Ms. Humus, and everyone else at the Lincoln School. Lions pride.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm just going to remind Daniel to stay on because we're going to bring the Beauchamp folks up next. But our Lincoln friends can go do life. So the next item on the superintendent's report is a presentation from the Beauchamp School, and they are going to talk to us about socially distant science. And I have brought up Dr. Napier, who's going to lead us in this presentation. And I've made him co-host Percy so that you can bring up the folks who are presenting with you.
Okay. Can I just promote those panelists?
Yes, please. And if you, if you, you know how to do that, yes? Yeah, obviously, you're doing it already. And just while you're doing that, Dr. Napier, I have the surprises here. Should I give those out now or wait a bit?
You can give them out now.
Okay. Are they for us?
Yeah.
I love prizes.
You have a surprise? Oh, my goodness. Wow. I love it. Wow. Christine, Christine, Diana.
I'm just trying to, just trying to make sure that I have all of the parents. I think the parents may be under different names here. Glenn, that one of our students. The parent of a student. Let's see here.
That's one of my students.
All right. And Jill Herwig, I don't think is. Ralph.
Ms. Herwig is with the Garfield Middle School, folks. I mean, sorry, she's presenting with Dr. Calucci.
Okay, I think that may be everyone that's here.
If you want to do quick intros, I will do the same thing. I'll get ready to share your presentation while folks say hello.
Okay. My name is Percy Ingram, the principal of the Beauchamp School. And I have here several students and teachers, and we wanted just to talk about our work in science this year. So as you know, science is a very hands-on subject. You learn it best by doing. You learn it best by doing, and I was just letting you know, come in. You learn it best by doing, but that's very, very difficult when you're doing it over a computer and when you have to stay six feet apart. So the collaborative nature of science is almost impossible. And so this year, over the past five years, we've really, really taken science very, very seriously. We focus on it a lot. But with the pandemic hit, like my personal approach was, you know, teachers have enough on their plate, and I'm just, I'm not going to emphasize- and I'm just, I'm not going to emphasize my daily, my yearly focus on science this year. However, I was really, really amazed and surprised how organically, you know, this approach has manifested because like teachers were still doing some really amazing things, and I thought this was a great opportunity to share some of the things that our students did while at home and while also adhering to the social distancing guidelines. So if you can go on to the next slide, if I'm trying. Okay. Do you have the link? I'm not sure if the, actually, I think the links would work. Can you go on to the next one? So over the last five years, we've done extensive, we had quite a few accomplishments. You know, we have Primers to Science Project. We've had hands-on multidisciplinary units. We do engineering units. That's something that every grade does. We have a STEAM club, we have a tech club. We've done really tremendous work with coding in our tech classes. And I call it a robot army. Our tech teacher has, through Donors Choose, really secured a bunch of robots that students can use to be able to showcase their tech skills, I mean, and their coding skills. But as I said, the pandemic provided a lot of challenges, and we have, you know, and it made it really difficult. But we really think, if you go on to the next slide, that our students, I mean, our students and teachers did a really good job of rising to the challenge, and they've really done some really great work with several units of study that are really maintaining the science instructional momentum and really push students to develop the ability to think like scientists. And so I want to present several examples of these projects. They are, so I'm going to start with the first grade project. This is the Lunar Lander project. This is from Ms. Ebner, Ms. Dory, and Ms. McCabe. And two of our students that worked on this project are Daniel Benia and Juri Mohammed.
Okay, thank you for letting me present today. So for our first grade Lunar Lander project, we wanted to make sure that we created an authentic task for our kiddos, even though it was remote. And so we knew we wanted to develop the project through the EDP process because that's something that we do in first grade quite often. So we used different types of technology, and we introduced all the different steps of the EDP. But to encompass the culminating activity for our space unit specifically, learning about the moon, we created a lunar lander that was to be built using the process. And the students had to design a lunar lander structure, just as astronauts would, that landed safely and softly, keeping two astronauts safe inside. And so the outcome was amazing. They loved the project, they followed the EDP process. They successfully created, tested, improved, and presented their lunar landers. And they were so proud of what they accomplished, and they couldn't wait to dig into the next EDP project after that. They kept asking us, "When is our next EDP? When's our next EDP?" So I'll give the next slide to Elizabeth.
So there were many challenges with remote teaching this year, but it also presented us with many unique opportunities. And this project, along with other science projects, allowed us to take advantage of the unique opportunities that remote teaching presented. So for example, there were a lot of problem-solving opportunities. So as opposed to a traditional lesson where we might have provided students with what materials to build their lunar landers with, students had to be problem solvers, just like engineers, and figure out what materials they should use based on what they had available to them. It was another really unique opportunity to involve parents and brothers and sisters and other caregivers at home into the learning process. And during these projects, parents and students collaborated together, and that was a really wonderful opportunity. Another opportunity that remote teaching presented was the opportunity for students to learn how to create with technology and not just be a consumer of technology. And in this particular example, you'll see examples where students learned how to use technology to record videos and to present their work. So although remote teaching was challenging, science especially allowed us to really take full advantage of all the opportunities that presented.
So are you able to click on the, yeah? Yeah.
I may not have clicked. Is this going to have audio?
Yes.
All right, I might, I'm going to-
But I think you can do it without it, but yes, it does have audio.
So let me try to, let me stop sharing for a second, and then I'll reshare. I don't think that I clicked that share sound button, so I'm going to click that. And this. And we should be good to go.
Just click to the right, over here.
Should I just click through?
Yeah.
Okay. That was quick. Let me do that again. Second test. Ooh. Do that one again. Definitely saw an improved landing on that second test.
So you're back to the next one.
Oh, boy. I just clicked something wrong. Hold on. Why do I not see it down?
Would you like me to share from the way?
Yeah, why don't you? Since you know exactly what you're doing, I think you should be able to share from there. Paul, can you let us know if that's okay?
Can we do that?
I think so. Yes, he's giving me the thumbs up.
I just need to share the sound. And we have a few students here who can talk about their experience with the lunar lander.
Daniel, what, Daniel, thank you for letting us share your project today. What was your favorite part of creating your lunar lander? You can unmute.
Thank you, please.
And what was one thing that you learned from this project? Is there anything else you want to tell us about making a lunar lander? Thank you, Daniel.
We have Juri here as well.
Juri, what was your favorite part about making the lunar lander?
Being made.
And what did you learn after making it?
I learned that I, that I, that I needed cups to balance it, to have sticks.
All right. And so the next presentation, thank you very much. So the next presentation is Ruud Goldberg Machines. This is done by fourth graders in Ms. Amstess's class.
Thanks so much, Dr. Napier. So in our Ruud Goldberg machine project, our students, our fourth graders, get to do a lot of different things. It's kind of the culminating event of our big units on energy. So our fourth graders get to learn about simple machines. They get to apply their knowledge about energy transfer that we've spent weeks learning about. They get to practice the engineering design process, which my incredible colleagues in the lower grades have already started them on. So by the time they get to me in fourth grade, they're well-traveled engineers. Our students get to design, build, test, and rebuild their own Ruud Goldberg machines. And we use mostly recycled materials. So a Ruud Goldberg machine, of course, is where you take a very simple task and make it more complicated by adding a lot of steps. So instead of ringing a bell with your hand, you have to make paper cups hit dominoes and move a wheel and axle up an inclined plane to then ring the bell. And my students get to do this. They get to design and create their own machines using all those physics principles and types of energy and energy conversion that we've learned about. So this project gives students a really great hands-on experience because a lot of the physics principles of energy are really intangible, and it's hard to really think about kinetic energy because you can't see it and feel it and touch it. But this project gives kids a chance to experience it and see energy transfer between objects. So they use their understanding of simple machines, different types of energy, motion, force, and gravity to kind of show everything they know and really explain their thinking. Next slide, please. So here we have some pictures of some examples. And these are mostly examples in the classroom, but the one with the cardboard background is one of our at-home examples. So this year was particularly interesting with our hybrid machines, if you will, because we had, normally, the kids would be using school materials and my materials in the classroom to make their machines. But this year, it presented them with a unique ability to use whatever they had at home, including their furniture, to make their machines. And sometimes their cats came into the machines as well, which was really interesting. On the next slide, we have two incredibly short videos. They're each about five seconds long as well, with sound. Okay, go ahead.
Yay! Yes. And that is your project.
So there you have an example of one at school. The first video that we watched is "In My Classroom", and the second video we watched is "At Home". So kids still got to work together, whether it was with their siblings or with their classmates. And then at the end of everything, they all got to show and present their projects to each other. So we, you know, put the displays up on the smartboard in the classroom so everyone can see each other's projects, regardless of where they were building and learning from. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. All right, we've got one thing. Here we go. So the next project is from Ms. Roberts and students Natalia, Nargo Alvarez, and Ali Dikai. This is flood safety, and this idea is building a boat to mitigate flooding.
Hello. Thank you for letting us share our project. The students were very excited. We had many, many students who wanted to come and join us today. So I am very proud of everything we did. This was built as an authentic hands-on learning experience, and it took place during our science unit on severe weather. And our students engaged in the engineering design process to build a boat or a raft, which would keep our Beauchamp school community safe in the event of a flooding situation that necessitated an evacuation. So a big part of our severe weather learning is about safety during severe weather. That's what our standard is tied around. So since our school happens to be located right between Salt Marsh and the ocean, we do have and have had flooding situations at our school in the past and as well as within the neighborhood. So this is something that is a real life problem and something that the students really have encountered within their lives, which I think needed all that much. Sort of cemented the learning that much more. We worked through the entire engineering design process, starting with research, group discussions of prior knowledge. The students did both independent designing as well as team designing. They compared and discussed multiple different solutions. They had to budget a certain amount of money to purchase their supplies in order to build their boats. We had constraints and parameters that they had to build around certain time parameters and cost parameters and material parameters. And they were able to build, rebuild, and task their boats. So after our first round of testing, we had a large discussion and reflection about the strengths and weaknesses that they found in their design. They used that knowledge to redesign, rebuild, and re-task their designs. And at the end of the process, they were asked to request and to engage in writing on the entire process and the outcomes that came along with it. So the students, as I said, they designed a boat or a raft. It had to float successfully without taking on any water while holding both passengers and supplies. And it had to be carried out under both budgetary and time constraints. And we were lucky that this happened when the students were all out back in school and we were able to start to, able to use supplies together within our three feet of distance. And they were able to collaborate with their classmates to work within constraints synchronically, request upon outcomes, and most importantly, I think, to embrace mistakes as steps toward growth and learning process. And that was a big takeaway from this, is that mistakes are a big step. They're something that's needed, they're something that's expected, and they're something that we learn from. And we've got a few pictures, and there's some pictures on the next slide. And then I have two friends who just wanted to share a few things about the project. So Ali, would you like to share hers?
Sure.
And start off, Ali, with what was the most fun or enjoyable part of the project?
I'll start with that. I feel like the most fun part of the sex activity was we got to work together and we got to build and put ideas to plan. We got to, we, we got to all share our ideas together and see if it would flow with all the pennies. The experience of building the boat was fun because we got to put all of our groups' amazing ideas to plan.
Awesome. And then you want to tell us, Ali, what's the, which one thing you learned from doing the project?
Something I learned while doing this project was knowing how to not always just start building first, but planning it out, sketching it, and trying to make a model first. Not the actual one, to see if the model would work or not. Instead of just building, we can make a prediction first of it. It's, would it work or not? I feel like this was a good experience. So when I am grown, I will know what to do if I become an engineer.
Awesome. Thank you, Ali. And Natalia, would you like to share with us?
Okay.
All right, Natalia, let's tell us, what was the most fun part of the project for you?
I really liked the building stage of the engineering design process. I think I liked the building the best because it is fun to look at the materials and think about what I want to build. We designed a plan independently first and then took all the best parts for our team design. Then we got to choose the best materials to make an actual model for our design.
Awesome. And then what was one thing you learned from this project?
What I learned from this project is that we can always learn from our mistakes. For our first boat, we saw the good parts of the boat and the bad parts. The good parts we added to our redesign, ours, for our second. For our second boat, the bad parts might not work as well. So we changed them to make them work. We took those mistakes and we became better engineers from talking and thinking about them.
Awesome. Thank you.
Awesome. And so our last group is personalized keychains and 3D design printers. And so you all, our students were nice enough for our gift that came from this project to all of our committee members. So, but for now, I want to turn this over to Ms. Sarah Solomon-Sina and also students Sarah Medina, who are going to explain how these keychains that you have in front of you came to be.
Thank you. My fellow presenters could not make it today. So a little bit about this project and how it came to be. One of the things as a tech teacher I was concerned with this year is the amount of technology our students were consuming. And I wanted to allow an opportunity for them to understand how to create using the technology that we have. That's been, always been a huge emphasis in our lab. We, students learn from the get-go that we use our technology to create, and these are tools to help us improve and better our lives. That being said, we are also added with an additional challenge when we returned to school that students were not able to come into the lab. We were traveling specialists this year, and so I had to think of a creative way to have the lab come to them. And so come forth with this new project, using our brand-new 3D printer that we acquired this year. So the challenge was students had to create personalized keychains using the program Tinkercad, which is an online 3D designing platform. And the way I presented it to the student is just to kind of have them kind of put themselves where they might be shopping. They go into a store, they see some keychains with names, and they so happen, not happen to find their name on those keychains, whether it be sold out, maybe it's not a popular name at the moment, and, or even if they found their name, maybe they don't have the money. So we were to, like, students understood that they can use something like a 3D printer to create something. So students learned through Tinkercad how to resize shapes, had to layer shapes together to make one object, and they had to create equal or key rate. And the goals, I want the students to be able to drag and resize shapes within Tinkercad, be able to group two or more objects together to create that one shape, and understand how the 3D printer, what the 3D printer is and how it works, and also the importance of using technology to help create and solve problems. So the idea is after this project, the students will have a better understanding with Tinkercad and how they can use Tinkercad to create other objects. Next slide, please. So we have a Flash4 Creator Pro that we were able to get funded through an innovation grant through Donors Choose and Price Waterhouse, Uber, Charrold Foundations. I also were able to utilize the expertise of my CCO students, who helped me export and import the files onto the printer because my students were not able to do that step because they weren't able to get into the Beauchamp lab. And each of these files, we can take up to 10 to 30 minutes to print and print on the size of the project. Next slide. So here I have some tech experts kind of walking up through the steps on how to create a 3D Pro's light keychain within Tinkercad.
This is not perfect, and they have, this is amazing. Up the basic blocks to the workspace. We draw lower, the red box. Then we slide it up. And then we make it longer. Now we, next we're going to bring this cylinder and give it to our workspace. This is a little bit of a little.
Okay, you're ready to get out, so I'm just going to make it out.
Yep.
So first, you drag it up, and then you put it on the box. And then you make a circle. And you take, you take, you take, you take. And then you make a product.
Ah, hold on.
And then you draw it. And then you add a keychain. And then you cut it.
Okay. And there you have it. So, so this was incredible work, and I can't tell you how proud I am of students and the teachers for the awesome work they did over the, during remote learning and during the pandemic. It was truly inspiring to see that, like, usually we have, like, school-wide priorities. We really push certain initiatives. This is all, like, organically generated. And so that just really made me so proud to see that this work was continuing on under such difficult circumstances. So we found this really great opportunity to share this with everyone.
Thank you so much to everybody at, at the Beauchamp School. That was amazing. And I've already put my new keychain on my ID so that I can have it with me everywhere, every day. And I want to thank, in my case, it was Sarah who...
Let me tell you who it is.
Oh. Sorry. Okay, let me try that again. Can you hear me now? They cannot hear me, Paul. Can you hear me now? Yes, okay, all right. So let me repeat that. What I said was, I'm so thankful to everybody at the Beauchamp. Those presentations were amazing. And I'm just so proud to work with these awesome teachers who put these opportunities before all of the students at the Beauchamp School and the incredible work that the students shared with us today. I did put my new keychain on to my ID so it'll be with me at all times. And I was also thankful to have Sarah's little picture and know that Sarah is the one who made this keychain for me. So I'm very excited. Thank you all very much. And I know the committee is all really excited to have theirs as well.
I'd like to say thank you to Christina. I'm going to put, I'm going to put this right on my dog's leash, I think, because this will be helpful in looking for her in the white. Thank you.
And in addition to thanking everybody for the keychains, I want to say that the other projects were equally amazing. And just to be thinking about how to land a moon landing, a moon rover, or creating a Rube Goldberg machine, all of those things are so much more exciting than I think what a lot of us endured when we were in elementary school. So thank you all very much. It was an incredible presentation.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Thank you, Mrs. Rizzo. I also wanted to thank all of you for all the presentations. They were really wonderful. And a special thank you to Deanna, Dayana, for my keychain that I already have on my ID. Thank you, everybody.
So, yes, thank you to all the educators at Beauchamp School and to the students. You were amazing. I love how you use recycled materials and anything at home to do these projects with. I am so impressed with the flood safety, the rafts in the boats. Natali, Natali and Ali, awesome jobs. But I want to give a special, well, I want to give a shout out to Simon, who did my keychain, and a special shout out to Daniel because he not only attended the Beauchamp, but he was here for the Lincoln School presentation also. So I hope he learned as much as we did tonight. So thank you, everyone, at Beauchamp School. Any of my other colleagues? Well, with that, we look forward to September and being able to join you at Beauchamp to see things firsthand. So thank you, everyone, at Beauchamp School.
Dr. Kelly?
Thank you. The next item on the superintendent's report is a presentation from Dr. Perella. And as I bring him up as a panelist, I'm going to invite our Beauchamp friends to go have an enjoyable evening for themselves. Dr. Perella worked extensively with Dr. Mokaba, our curriculum directors, and our design team from Perkins Eastman to develop the educational plan for Riviere High School. And I know that Mrs. Gravellisi and Mrs. Rizzo have been part of the meetings where we've talked extensively about that educational plan. One of the requirements before we submit this first iteration of that to the MSBA next week is that the school committee give us a vote of approval on that, on that document. And I will say, I'm sure you all took the time to read it over the last several days. It is a first draft. It will evolve over the next year and a half as our ideas for the building and design for the building become more evolved. When we learn, when we learn we have a building's going to be cited and other aspects like that, this, this document will evolve as well. And so I've invited Dr. Perella to be here as the leader of the high school. And he's not going to really take us through the whole document. It's available online for anybody who wants to look at it. And as always, we welcome feedback on the school building website, where there is a place for people to provide feedback. But if any committee members had questions on that, Dr. Perella is here to address them, or I can, or Dr. Galucci, most likely Dr. Perella.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to apologize. I had this shift to my phone, tried to multitask, I'm picking up my son from his basketball practice. But I'm very excited to be here and those enjoyable presentations earlier tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have.
Any of my colleagues have any questions or comments for Dr. Perella?
Mrs. Rizzo. My only comment is that it was clear, it is clear that this had a great deal of thought, cooperation from many different people. It's, and the fact that it is, that it will continue to evolve so that we can get a state-of-the-art high school in the, quote, "not-too-distant" future. I really admire how much work you put into this. I, I've sat on a couple of committees. I remember when this high school that we're in right now was being mapped out and then eventually, when it opened, and it seems like it was forever ago. And I hope this, that we will keep being the buds, as you have mentioned in the opening, with best urban district in the state. And having some, having a document of this magnitude, it is articulate, it's thoughtful. It is, is clearly a work of so many caring and concerned and talented individuals that I'm really proud to look at it. So thank you very much for submitting it. And I look forward to following more, following its evolvement as you continue in the time ahead. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Written really well, too.
Anyone else have any comments for Dr. Perella?
Thank you, Dr. Perella, for your work. I have to say, I truly agree with Ms. Ty. I would, probably wouldn't have said it so eloquently, but your work is so appreciated and so needed. The document is clear, concise of what we need. So thank you for all your work and look forward to more coming. So excited about this project on a whole. So thank you very much, and I hope your son won at basketball tonight.
Thank you. And I would add that this has been a collaborative experience and process. So there's no one author on this document. It is a collection of, as Ms. Ty mentioned, caring educators that are putting in their philosophies and thoughts on how we should move forward as a school system. It's been a really incredibly reflective and enlightening experience as well. So I've enjoyed the impact of it. Thank you.
Dr. Kelly?
Could you all take just a quick vote? Could you all just take a quick vote in support of that document?
Yeah. A motion to approve the educational program presented by Dr. Perella tonight.
Second.
First by Susan Gravellisi, second by Mr. Ferranti. Roll call.
Mrs. Bronson Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. D'Ambrosio?
Yes.
Mr. Ferranti?
Yes.
Mrs. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Rigo?
Thank you all very much, and thank you, Dr. Perella. Go enjoy your family.
Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
The final item on the superintendent's report is, I'm actually going to turn it over to Dr. Galucci to talk to us about the revised puberty curriculum, which was released this year from the state. And with him are Mr. Shea and Ms. Hurwig, who are going to present on what that's going to look like at the middle school level. And also, Dr. Galucci is going to give us a quick update on COVID and we'll be out with that. So, Dr. Galucci?
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Kelly. So I want to, once again, congratulate our Massachusetts Health Educator of the Year, Jill Hurwig. She was voted, voted by the Massachusetts Association for Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance as our Educator of the Year. And I think her work with this new curriculum is just another testament to her dedication and her leadership skills for our district and for our children. The, as it was referred to in the past, the puberty kind of curriculum has been talked about in recent years as being a bit antiquated, particularly our approach to it, and not being so comprehensive for our students that are going through the important years of adolescence. And I'm so thankful that Ms. Hurwig, in conjunction with Nick Calvano and Joel Brooks, our other middle school educated, health educators, really took this on and revamped the curriculum so that next year, it's much more comprehensive for our students, inclusive for our students, and more well-rounded. And without further ado, I am going to turn it over to Ms. Hurwig for a brief presentation in regards to the upcoming curriculum that middle school students are going to experience next year and that also that the information that's going to go out to families, that's going to allow them to make informed choices about a curriculum that's really helpful to our kids, but also something that we extend the courtesy of making families aware that it's coming. And if there are any aspects of this curriculum that they would like to opt out of, they have that ability to do so. So Ms. Hurwig, can you take it away?
Okay. So we have decided to, like Mr. Dr. Lee had mentioned, really revamp our, what used to be considered our puberty unit, into basically incorporate our lessons into just our daily routines with our students and our curriculum throughout the school year. So, and the reason why we're doing this, why the update is happening is because health education is, has really done a complete 180 in the last about 10 years, where it's going from really just learning facts to trying to develop certain essential skills for our students. Dr. Kelly, if you don't mind, sharing maybe slide two, just so some people can see. So basically, our, health has gone into a very skilled... So basically, health has gone into a very skills-based approach, where it's really about teaching our students the skills of decision-making, advocating for themselves, self-management, goal-setting, accessing reliable resources, as well as analyzing the influences around them, and interpersonal communication. So keeping that in mind, we really wanted to take our, pretty much our one-day purity lesson with our sixth grade and our two or three, maybe sprinkled in sexual health lessons with our eighth grade, into something that's kind of interwoven into our curriculum and kind of normalizes these topics for our students. But also, as we can see on Slide 3, is social health is not just talking about anatomy or sexual intercourse, per se. It's about being able to speak up for yourself and identify your values. So a lot of the lessons that I'm going to share with you today or share that are going into our sixth or the eighth grade, are, you will notice, they're not anatomy-based. There are maybe one or two, but maybe it's more, what is being safe online? How to keep yourself healthy? And how do you keep yourself, or what is a romantic, healthy romantic relationship? So we're really trying to just incorporate some general life skills instead of just focusing on this one highlighted day. So our new curriculum is basically, the one that we are pulling from, is research-based, is backed up by research. It uses inclusive language. All the wording in these lessons is used in a way that students can identify with the language in any way. And it's aligned also with our national health standards, as well as the national sexual health standards, which do exist, and are aligned in an age-appropriate way. So the new curriculum that we are pulling from is called the Rights, Respect, and Responsibility Curriculum. It is created by Advocates for Youth. I was sent by the district about three or four years ago to train the trainer, two-day intensive course on the curriculum. And basically, just like I've said, it meets the national sexuality education standards. It has been reviewed by the Health Education Curriculum Analysis Tool, which is a big tool to kind of see if your curriculum is effective for your students. So it's been reviewed by that. It is a K through 12 curriculum. So we've just basically taken this very comprehensive curriculum and picked out some of the key lessons that not only Joel and Nick have identified with me, but also our physical educators came together. And we really just kind of sat down and wanted to figure out, based on students and the student needs and what has been going on with our students, what would be the best thing. So for our sixth grade, we kept it very, very simple, thinking about their maturity level, things of change is good, which will address just the changes that are happening in their bodies, so whether it's emotional or physical. As well as, we do do two units on the male and female body parts, just so that they're aware of what is going on. And then a basic little lesson on liking and loving. And this slideshow also is kind of interactive, so I wanted to create one that it could be shared with our school committee. So if you do click on the links, it provides you a more in-depth description of the lesson plan, as well as an example of the opt-out letter that I'll explain in a little bit. And then for our seventh grade, depending on our seventh grade needs, we wanted to talk about gender roles and gender expectations because we were noticing with our students, these words that are being thrown around, like, boy, girl, little girl. Another lesson would be understanding boundaries. We're noticing trends with our students to not understanding boundaries and what is okay maybe to send to someone, what is okay to share with someone. We also decided at the seventh grade level, because we do hear these conversations about dating and going out, is what does it mean to be in a romantic relationship? What does it mean to be more than friends? And then, in particular, with our seventh grade, we definitely wanted to emphasize being smart and staying safe online, especially with some of the trends that we're seeing with our middle school students and some behaviors. And then eighth grade, being a little bit more mature in our traditional sexual health unit category, this is where we are, again, addressing healthy and unhealthy relationships, some just of reproduction basis. And then, decision-making when it comes to protecting your health, so and understanding STDs, which used to be kind of called the HIV/AIDS lesson, but really this encompasses all different types of things that can come about. And then the last lesson would be being a sex ed student. So it's just wanting to access reliable information and knowing where to get safe information or reliable information, especially online. So in particular, the three major changes that are happening with this curriculum is, the first thing is that this curriculum, in general, is going to be co-ed. So instead of having separated classrooms, separated students, we're bringing the kids, it will just be in their classrooms. It will not have to be a big event, splitting people apart. And this is to ensure inclusivity for all gender identities. It also is been proven through research, as well as through colleagues of mine in different states implementing this curriculum, that it improves student behavior and engagement. A lot of the times, we think that our students will be more misbehaved when they're with their maybe opposite gender. However, they're actually more engaged and better behaved. And then also, this kind of ensures that both sides are learning about the opposite sex and their sexual health concerns and experiences. So they can kind of understand what their peers are going through, especially if they are the opposite sex. Another major change is our opt-out letter for parents. Instead of saying, "I'd generally opt out," saying, "My son or daughter, my student cannot participate in these lessons." We have broken down the lessons, so parents can choose and say, "I do not want my child participating in this particular lesson." So the letter includes the lesson descriptions. We can provide the more detailed lessons for a parent if they request. And it kind of prevents students from being left out of everything. So if there is a lesson that their parent feels is something that they want their child to participate in, they have the option of doing so, but still have the option to opt out of all if they see fit. And then the last change is that this is now being interwoven into our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade lessons, instead of just a basic little one in sixth grade and then a little sprinkling of it in eighth grade. And this is basically to allow for students to explore topics relevant to their current developmental changes. So really, a lot of these things are things that these kids or students are questioning at these different grade levels, as well as it's an experience that will also be under supervision and under kind of the close discussion and implementation of one of our licensed health educators, who's trained in this. And we also, and as mentioned before, lessons have been chosen with the consideration of our current student trends and needs, as well as move on to also keep into consideration the community's values and beliefs as well. So it's kind of a lot, but it's kind of a big change that is going to be, we would like to start to implement in our little schools. And I don't know if, Mr. Shea, if you want to add anything, or Dr. Galucci, if there's anything else you wanted to add.
Before Mr. Shea speaks, I just want to thank and recognize Mr. Shea for his leadership in this initiative. I remember when Frank and I were colleagues at the Remy Marsh Academy. We had some informal conversations about concerns that we had about the puberty unit, along with Dr. Vedawa. And certainly, in my first year on the job, this is an initiative that Mr. Shea quickly brought to me as something that he wanted to embed in the curriculum. And he really led this initiative in working with the three health educators at each of the middle schools. So before you speak, I want to thank you, Mr. Shea, for all of your work in this area.
And Dr. Galucci, and again, I'll be brief and just piggyback on what Dr. Galucci said earlier. You know, Jill really took the baton and ran with this initiative along with our other health educators. They met repeatedly. And the product you see in front of you is the product of a lot of work, a lot of thought. And we are just very fortunate to have educators in our small department, like Ms. Hurwig, who can lead this task and come through with what you saw here tonight. So again, thank you, and thank you again, Dr. Galucci.
So I just want to say thank you. Another phenomenal job by Ms. Hurwig. And thank you, Mr. Shea, and Mr. Galucci, and all our middle school health educators. This is some great changes. And I really look forward to seeing how the students enjoy the co-ed class. So I'm really interested. I'm blushing just thinking about it. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? No? Well, thank you so much for all the work that you've put in, and thank you for your time tonight. And anything that we can do to support you, please let us know.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Thank you both very much for your presentation, and I hope you enjoy the rest of your evening.
Have a good night.
Good night, you, good night.
Okay. So I wanted to give the committee a brief recap, if you could ever really recap COVID-19 in an unprecedented year. And before I do so, I just want to say every single RPS employee, inside and outside of our schools, had such a contribution to keeping us afloat this year and really doing some great things in the midst of something that we've never seen as a school community or a community in general. But tonight, I wanted to spotlight some of the health and medical efforts that our school department worked with the Revere Board of Health in conjunction with Lauren Buck and Dr. Natalie Kong, who I cannot tell you how great of a partner they were in this initiative. And, you know, recapping some of our accomplishments as a Revere community and not necessarily a school community just gave such a great sense of pride. And I wanted to highlight some of the work that was done over the course of this year. So if we think about our community health and medical efforts, it really started with housing the Stop the Spread testing site at Revere High School. And that takes coordination with the Revere High School administration and custodial staff and really everyone in facilitating not only that Revere community members could test at this site, but people from across the Commonwealth. Adrian McGuire led an initiative in setting up flu clinics, when, if you remember, it was mandated for RPS students at the time, in the fall, and their families. Not only could students go and receive the flu vaccine, they could really receive any required vaccine at that time, and just setting that up exclusively for our students and families early in the fall months. We hosted a Vaccine Town Hall Clinic with Dr. Golembach, Dr. Ingles, Dr. Kong, and Dr. Levitz. And that was followed by one that was exclusive for our Portuguese-speaking families with Dr. Golembach and Dr. Ghaziani, and a Spanish Vaccine Town Call Clinic for our Spanish-speaking families, again with Dr. Golembach and Dr. Wes Alowski, really just providing information and insight for all of those families about the upcoming vaccine. This was very early on, when the vaccine was not available, but we knew it was coming soon. Our RPS nurses, that I'll speak about more in depth in just a moment, facilitated 39 vaccine clinics in our community. And that's not just the traditional vaccine clinics that were housed at the Remy Marsh Academy. They also visited multiple homes for individuals who were immunocompromised. And just, their work has been amazing, and I have a whole slide dedicated to them. One of the early important moments during this pandemic was when the RMA and the nursing staff and the Revere Board of Health hosted that first clinic for first responders very early on. That allowed us to establish a format that we've now used for next, all RPS staff when we gave the Moderna vaccine early on in March and April. And then, more recently, as I'll talk about in a second, a Pfizer vaccine for students that were 12 years or older from across all of our middle schools, our high school, and even some of our older elementary students. We hosted a pool testing webinar for students and families when our students were coming back to school. And then our pool testing program commenced for in-person students and staff. And then hosted another town hall vaccine webinar for, again, eligible students and their families. We did that at the student level with Dr. Perella, and then that evening with families who were interested in having students who were eligible vaccinated to ensure that they had all of the information to make an informed decision. And then recently, in late May, and as soon as tomorrow, I'm proud to say, we vaccinated over 200 students during school hours within the school day, gaining permission from their family member or, I'm sorry, parent, guardian, or caretaker. And then before actually vaccinating students, just reaching out and having one more confirmation phone call to make sure that families were on board. And again, that was not only our administration, our health aides, our nurses, but also, again, her name's going to keep coming up, but Lauren Buck. Her work has just been amazing. Reaching out and speaking directly to the families, both before and during the vaccination process. A little information on our pool testing initiative. So we've had nearly 1,200 students that have consented out of our 5,000 in-person students. We've had what we feel is an incredibly effective pool testing system. There have been districts that have had to change kind of midstream or look for other resources. Since our plan, we have not deviated from our testing system. Our administrators, our nurses, our health aides have served as coordinators for this process. Our educators, our power professionals have observed student testing in the classrooms. Testing teams for classrooms that needed additional support were established, and they serve as primary point people for this process. Throughout the process, we've identified seven instances where we've had a positive result. When we have a positive result in a pool, let's say it's a pool of five students or staff members, the very next day, early in the morning, and I should back up a little bit. When we do pool testing on Monday morning, there's been very few instances where we have not received results Monday evening. The result turnaround has been amazing. And that has allowed us to know Monday evening that we have to locate a certain pool of individuals. And whether that's five students or five staff, they then receive binex rapid testing the following day in the nurse's office. And through that process, we've been able to determine, in five out of the seven instances, the positive member of that pool, and then be able to provide them with support and guidance, as well as their family members. There was one instance where the next day, all of the rapid tests came back negative. And we had to go to step three. And during that instance, all of the families asked if they could test at the Revere High School site. And we were able to identify the positive individual via the PCR testing that goes on at that site. Most recently, this week, we had an instance where we had a pool of students. We had a positive result that came to us. But in the interim, a student had expressed that they had experienced symptoms, and the family set up a private test, and they were determined to be positive. The very next day, however, we tested the four other members of the pool, and they were all determined to be negative, thankfully. So there were seven instances where we had a positive result. We were able to provide those families and students with information, support, and follow-up communication. And we are going to have that same process continue during our summer school program on the Mondays, with the exception of the July 4th holiday that will take place on a Tuesday. So the pool testing program itself has been very effective. Our school nurses, I can't say enough about their work this year. It's been amazing in every single solitary way. They've contact traced it in the spring and summer of 2020. They've coordinated food and other necessary supports for those in need. And of course, they provided COVID education during the spring and summer of last month, last school year, rather. The fall and the winter of into this year, they've continued to monitor the flu vaccine requirement and assisted families with accessibility, as I had mentioned earlier. They've led two flu vaccine clinics at the West Revere Complex in Garfield School. They've tracked COVID-19 positive cases for students and staff throughout the district, providing that invaluable support that I spoke about. They've continued to serve as a resource to staff, students, and families on a daily basis for any COVID-related questions or support. And as I mentioned, they established that first responder clinic that really served as the model for our district in helping support students, staff, and community members. As we enter the spring of '21, they've continued their amazing work. They've continued to run vaccination clinics. They've continued to run vaccination clinics for, that was, were exclusive for RPS staff. They've monitored our, all members of our school community for signs and symptoms while providing guidance on CDC, public health, and DESI protocols. Again, they've continued their contact tracing in the instances where we have had a positive case. They've coordinated weekly pool testing for staff and students in collaboration with our testing partner, CIC, and they continue to serve as a valuable resource for our school community in every way possible. I can't say how proud I am of their work, as we all are, they've just been amazing in every way possible. And that's my very brief recap. Certainly, as I said, every single member of our RPS community, inside and outside of our schools, have been amazing, but tonight I wanted to highlight our medical and healthcare work in conjunction with, with Dr. Kong and Lauren Buck. It's just been amazing in every way possible.
Thank you, Dr. Galucci. And I have to say, even though you don't want to see one positive result, to only have seven in an urban district of this size is just tremendous. And again, the work of our school nurses, Lauren Buck, Dr. Kong, and everyone else, we should be eternally grateful. So, thank you so much.
I'll, I'll just add to that, that, you know, part of the reason that we've only had seven cases is because all of the school department staff have been so vigilant about making sure that everybody's following the safety protocols. As we sit here tonight in this room, all masked, because despite changes to the guidance and the regulations at the state level, there are different requirements within schools. And one of them is that adults and children in all school buildings be masked at all times. And I, you know, so everybody, with the nurses' leadership, the nurses have really been able to help guide all of the other adults in how, in how to help the children understand and follow the safety protocols.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly.
It's my name, Mrs. Rizzo.
Ms. Ty?
Well, I'd like to give a special shout out to Adrienne McGuire, because she organized a group of nurses to go into the homes of elderly people. I'm a volunteer for Mystic Valley Elder Services. And she went in and, and I do have a picture of a 100-year-old World War II veteran who got her shot, and Adrienne, she was very reluctant, but when Adrienne and the other school nurses went in, she took it and was very pleased and was happy to get the follow-up one, too. So they are not only that kind of professional people who know how to do the things and do them, but they're gentle souls who understand what people's fears, what people's experiences lead them toward perhaps being negative. And, and they allay those fears, and they have been, they have been a godsend to this, to this community.
Dr. Galucci?
And I couldn't agree more. Adrienne has been incredible, as have all the nurses. And I also want to recognize Jessica Gagnon, who is our lead nurse. Jessica took on this role in her very, this is her very first year, it's my very first year. I talk to her on a daily basis, and she has been invaluable in working not only with the Revere Board of Health, but also coordinating her work with all of the nurses across the district. And I'm forever grateful to all of the nurses' work, Adrienne and our lead nurse, Jessica Gagnon, their work has just been incredible.
And Dr. Galucci, I've heard the same thing. That's how they feel about working with you. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
Everyone likes to be listened or heard, and you've done that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Mrs. Rizzo, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Gee, thank you, Dr. Kelly. We're on number seven, consent calendar. Does anyone have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Susan Gravolisi, second by Carol Ty. Report of subcommittees, are there any subcommittees that have anything?
[inaudible]
Oh, okay. I, I apologize. Roll call on the consent calendar.
Mrs. Bronson Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Diambrosio?
Yes.
Mr. Feranti?
Yes.
Mrs. Gravolisi?
Yes.
Mr. Sannella?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Arigo?
Report of subcommittees, anyone have anything to report out?
Just a very brief report, Madam Chair.
Ms. Ty?
That the, we continue in negotiations with the teachers and the mayor, and Mr. Sannella and I are on that committee. And we are, we are always making progress toward the goal, but it's not quite so easy when you have people who are, who have strong opinions on all sides. And, and so we're continuing to do it, but we, in it all, we have managed to do it respectfully and with, with a great deal of professionalism. So I've been proud to work with that committee. Thank you.
It's always great to hear. Any old business? And our new business, we already took care of earlier, school committee interest, if no one does, I do. And so it's that time of year that we say congratulations and goodbye to our senior class last week. And although we are envious, we are so excited on the retirement of some of our Revere School family, namely June Krynski-Rutherford, Lucia, Lucia Ferroni, I should know that by heart, Donna Page, Ellie Carla, Albert Margavero, Terry Inserdo, Madeline Fava LaLoro, Joanne Donovan, Karen Stoli, Maria Speziale, Lenore Delegro, and finally, last but not least, Jack Moscow. You will all be deeply missed, but remember that the best part about being retired is you will never have to request time off again, and congratulations to all of you. Ms. Ty?
I have one more.
Thanks. I would like to give a shout out to Ms. Leanne O'Hara Memo and the senior class yearbook. It is, it must have been extraordinarily difficult to produce this. And for them to be able to work through, I mean, when everybody was remote and they had been remote before, it must have been really difficult. One sad thing, of course, I have a yearbook collection for the, for the Historic Society, which I'm putting together, and I know how much yearbooks mean to people, but in one of them, they have the portraits, and I'll just hold up this page, do you see the list of names here? Well, in that list of names, there are, I counted them, there are 199, who did not put in a portrait, and, and therefore did not get a chance to write a quote, or say their philosophy, or give a line from a poem, or a song, or an essay, or to say how they feel, or what their ambition is, or even in some cases to say things that they wish they could have said when they were in high school. It's a typical of every yearbook that I have all the way back from, to 1938. And I remember speaking to Ellie Carla once about her yearbook and why people, why, there were a number of people who were not included in that, and she said, there was a time when everybody was poor and nobody could pay for it. And I think that must have happened this year. Maybe part of it was because the kids weren't in school and they just were not, they just had too many other things to be concerned about. But I think a lot of it must have for money. I asked Leanne how much it costs, and it's $30 for a picture, but I know they can, they cannot do that. And then it's $65 for a yearbook plus shipping. And I was just hoping that maybe we, as a committee, could talk about, I know that it's not proper for the school budget to be spent on that. But maybe at some point next year, we could get together with Leanne and talk about maybe starting a GoFundMe page or something, because if that same thing exists next year, I just don't want to see this happen again. I'm only so sorry that I didn't, somebody didn't realize it sooner, so that we could have done something for these kids. They did have a wonderful graduation, they surely made us all proud. And so anyway, I just wanted to put that on the table for some future discussion. Thank you.
Ms. Ty? You're absolutely right. It is sad that those students didn't. I, I know some parents said it was difficult because normally they do their senior pictures in their junior year.
Junior year, as they were.
But we already had COVID, so they couldn't find professional photographers to be able to do it, or places that were open. So, I mean, money is definitely always going to be the main reason. Unfortunately, these students have fought through so many things in two years, and yes, it'd be a sin to let this happen again. So I'm going to ask you to remind us next year.
Happy to do so.
Okay. Any other school committee interests? I know we have a ton of them, but, okay, any motions? Do we have any motions this evening?
Nope.
Okay, and does anyone want to make a motion for an adjournment?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Feranti made a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Susan Gravolisi. So our next meeting would be July 20th. And if we're wrong, we'll correct it later. So thank you and good night.
No, we're on.
Mrs. Bronson Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Diambrosio?
Yes.
Mr. Feranti?
Yes.
Mrs. Gravolisi?
Yes.
Mr. Sannella?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Arigo?